You gotta buy it in the county, you live in it, for you to get use out of it, or for your, your county. And that ain't the, the case. But a lot of people don't understand that.
I did a little research with Norman a couple of years ago when we were talking about this increase in sales tax. And I think that penny would have brought in somewhere around a hundred thousand dollars, which would have been fifty thousand, you got. And then the other fifty would have been split like in five or six different ways. I mean, half goes to county, half goes to the city, and, you know, it, I think. Yes, yes.
What we're talking about, like, it's a small amount, it's not like a large portion of money that's gonna cover these.
You're talking about fifty grand, ish, but it pays the forty nine thousand.
That's correct. The feds cut us because of poverty. I'm actually.
How much, so how much are y'all on the deep line, though? How much are you coming in under what your scheduled revenues versus your expenses are right now? You've got a percent.
Think that we're doing on the, on our budget probably, I think.
We're back in a half million last year.
Well, not, uh.
But you're talking about this year, Brent, or expenditures?
Well, I got your trip, I want your numbers. Uh, and, and of course, again, property taxes are major goings, but come two twenty eight, which was yesterday, uh, you, you, your, your property tax is gonna be okay. You were sitting down in December, as of December thirty one, at forty seven point forty four percent. So you were two and a half percent under fifty percent, but again, that's just your timing. So your property tax is gonna be there. In fact, uh, if, if past trends hold true, your actual property tax will be more actual than what's in the budget.
Appreciate that.
But, but going down, and I mentioned it today, and, and to you, Freddie, your, your numbers are including a hundred nineteen thousand dollars payments in lieu of taxes local. If I have completely misunderstood, Norman not, and she's explained this to me, I know it means two times. So I believe I have the correct understanding, but you should verify just to make sure. You're overstating your budget by a hundred nineteen thousand, 'cause a hundred nineteen thousand is being put into your actual property tax. She does not put that line item in there. So you've overstated a hundred nineteen thousand from July of one fall, 'cause it's already in your property tax line. And I know I've mentioned that twice.
What, what funding is that? Is that the T V A deal?
It's, it's lined out on forty, no, it's not. It's, it's, it's lined out on forty one sixty two, that's already in your property tax line. She used to set pretty years ago, but for the last three fiscal years, it goes in property tax.
Correct.
But again, that's been discussed, I know it's twice.
I want to ask about property tax, or not property tax, sales tax. Let's say that the people are about to increase it. So get that extra, you know, you get that fifty thousand, so not change your B E P numbers?
Well, it, it, Corey, if you don't mind.
Yes, please.
But you keep that, and if I don't cover that, you, you back me up, okay? Uh, the sales tax, uh, again, we're running ahead, uh, at fifty five point one oh percent. So you're getting more sales, which again, past trends, sales taxes are more than budget. And I'll, I'll cover that, I'll figure just real quick. B E P, of course, is fifty percent, 'cause state pays what they say they're gonna pay. Uh, your other big numbers, and, and again, I, I hope that this is just truly timing, is early childhood education. You're only sitting at thirty four percent from your halfway through the year.
Yeah, that comes from early childhood education, just part of the pre-aid program. And that is totally, that's always a wash.
Okay, I think it's gonna be there.
Always a wash. Even though running behind, probably the state has not sent in what they need to get sent in yet. And that, well, what's the date on that front?
It's, it's twelve thirty one.
Okay, so yeah, that's, what's happening on that, they've not sent in, but I'll have to look at that. I think we've already received that from, from the state.
Yeah, I would say.
Right, right, that always comes in.
Career, like, career ladder program. Again, I'm assuming that it's gonna take care of itself, that you're actually only twenty three percent.
Correct, that comes in at the very end.
Okay, all right, with all that being said, if you look at total revenue halfway through the year, it was projected to be at seventeen point six million budget wise. You're actually sitting at seven point five. And again, property tax is gonna be there, these two other big funds that I just mentioned, Freddie says they're gonna be there, and I was certain things.
It's the state, it's the state.
So in essence, you're only sitting at forty two point four nine percent of your revenue collected, and it should be fifty percent. But based on how we've identified the big numbers, that should be there.
The biggest, the two, the biggest payrolls that we have, though, is that, is that last payroll before, before the fiscal ends in June. Because we're paying two months ahead.
Yes, sir.
It's what you're dealing with your employees, which is your biggest, which is your biggest line. That's the biggest, that's the biggest deal. And the budget is that last, is that last.
But I understand, this is revenue, we're talking about expenses, guys, this is just strictly your revenues, okay? So if, if you get that one nineteen squared away, and hopefully it's not double counted, but I believe it is, then you're going to have more realistic of actual coming into play. Again, that's lined out of.
Four zero one sixty two.
Yeah, all right, because someone mentioned T V A, no, T V A has its own separate line. It is lined, it is lined out of forty six eight fifty one. And again, you're significantly under there, but again, I'm assuming it's restricted to the timing.
It is, it is, they come in.
Because in fact, again, if past trends hold true, you're gonna actually get more from T V A than what is shown in the budget.
And one thing, too, it's just like y'all, if, if your revenues, at, right now, people are lined up in the property tax yesterday, and because of the last day, and we do the same thing with the states, the states send certain funds down at certain periods in time.
But to flip the coin, versus what the conversation's been up to this point in time, we all ought to truly understand and realize this in order to talk, uh, to our, our constituents when the question's asked about funding our school system. Because this county does do a good job in funding the camp, the, the school system. It does, and they, the, the, the numbers prove it. Current year, this is as of twelve, um, I'm sorry, six thirty of twenty nineteen, so it's last fiscal year. And our per property tax was one, a million seven hundred eight four 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 forty nine, which was greater than what's in the budget. Our prior year property taxes, fifty one four ninety two. Uh, T V A was three hundred and ninety eight thousand four hundred forty bucks. And local sales tax was seven hundred sixty seven, two hundred sixteen, for that's a, I'm just gonna say three million dollars. Three million, a thousand five hundred ninety eight dollars. I'll just say three million dollars that this county contributed to the school system in the prior fiscal year, okay? And those three things, we, we talk in terms of property taxes, and, and roughly so, because that's by far your largest, biggest source of revenue that goes anywhere, including the system, school system. But those other numbers are not nothing chicken feed. Yeah, fifty one thousand in prior year property tax collected, I'm not gonna say four hundred thousand from T V A, and three quarters of a million, seven hundred sixty seven from local property taxes. All of those add up, folks, to determine what this county has to contribute based on the state formula, okay? You've got two figures the state puts on you. B E P, basic education program, which for this, this year we're in now, this year we're in now, B E P sits at two million four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Two million four hundred twenty thousand dollars of state sense we're required for the B E P, B E P figure. However, we contribute more than that, and we've done it for several years now, that we've actually got our required contribution, which is a M O E, okay? We have to contribute greater up, B E P or M O E. Our M O E requirement is two million eight hundred seventy five thousand one hundred eleven dollars. So if the B E P is two point four, and we're required to put in two point eight seventy five, that is four hundred and fifty thousand dollars more than the B E P that we have increased over the years to be now at the higher amount, the M O E, that we're contributing. So when you hear the figure of B E P being contributed, that is a state number, but we're four hundred and fifty thousand above the B E P in contributing to our education system in this county. And for the last fiscal year, this is based on Douglas's figures, those sales taxes, the, uh, revenue, T V A revenue sharing, prior year collection, property taxes. In fact, as of June thirty, based on the school budget versus actually those numbers that was received for revenue wise, it was a hundred eighty five thousand ninety three dollars and eighty, eighty two cents, over above what you thought you was gonna get. Hundred eighty five thousand more than that M O E figure, because sales tax was higher, property taxes was higher, T V A contributions higher. All of those go into that figure. So we, we, we don't need to be pointing fingers at either side of the fence. And our, and, and, and our property tax owners need to know that, yes, education in this county is being funded over and above significantly what the state's required us to fund, even at the M O E level. Hundred eighty five thousand is, but that's not chicken feed to me, that's bacon butter, over above. And if I was a better person, come six thirty of twenty twenty, that one eighty five over prior year would exceed this year's one. And I'm just gonna put it on the table, since we're talking numbers, I was in the audience, I was not a commissioner. Those that was commissioners certainly know this, and those that spend the education system know this. Two fiscal years ago, that two hundred fifty thousand dollars that the Department of Education was throwing back for us to put in our general fund, was done away with. So in essence, you picked up two hundred fifty thousand dollars from prior fiscal years ago, coming forward, of more than two, that you didn't have before.
It was sixty one year, a hundred and ninety in there.
Uh, Corey's correct, as far as work was, work was the action I think when the vote was captured, is that right?
Yeah, it was two fifty.
Roughly, a little bit less than four hundred, is what we have. Depends on instruction, how many of that, of the teachers that we have right now, we're about a B seven over the B.
Uh, Corey, did I answer your question?
Well, it, it was basically just, let's say that the citizens didn't vote, the sales tax in, and fifty thousand more goes to schools, it's gonna change the B E P. Oh, well, it would change, but what I'm saying is, they'll get even more money. So I guess what I was asking was, if we, if we increase it by fifty thousand, are we gonna turn around and say, well, we need to.
Well, those, those are decisions that could be made. And, and at the last budget proposal, I, I, I'll just say, pardon me for those that was there in that commission, I actually said, knowing the financial situation that this county's in, that hundred and eighty five thousand, I think I backed it down one seventy five, and actually put it on the table to be voted on, to decrease the school budget by that seven cents, or one, one kind of six. I'm sorry, six cents. I, I, I made that motion, it failed, but I made the motion. Because I knew it was not taking anything away from the school system in the sense of decreasing the, the, the funding. In fact, the funding still would have been above for this fiscal year, if the same numbers came in, which trends says it's gonna be high. In fact, our sales tax right now is eighty five percent through December thirty one, higher than what was.
Well, let me go back to what David said at the very beginning, though. B E P is what you use, or M O E, you want to fund what you have, correct? I mean, that's your operations, that's not going above any other, correct? Is that correct? Okay, so I guess that's the question we gotta ask ourselves as, as both boards and the community, is, is that all we ever wanna give? Do we wanna just say, we're at the minimum, the minimum's where we're gonna be at, and we're never gonna be above the minimum?
But we're not, we're not at the minimum.
Where you're above, that's correct.
A hundred eighty five thousand above the M O E from that fiscal year.
If you, if you run the math, if you run the numbers.
But it's also, we have more students to one employee.
Yeah, but there's a lot of employees to name that are not teachers. And we have to have, like y'all, you know, you're paying the county, but we have to have names, we have to have.
If you use Ronnie's numbers, and you use, um, Freddie's head count, and you add in the extra, you're about a million dollars short currently to fund your operation in its current status. That's the number of staff, and if you're a teacher, if you wanna call them whatever, but what the state funds, what you have. The math comes out, it's a little bit short. To man all the schools, and that's where the short really is, where that comes from, wheel tax, or sales tax, or property tax, or whatever. And that's the current, you're running the current, in the current shape, it's like no change, no reductions, and that's what the math comes.
I'll, I'll, if, if, let me just go ahead and say, give a complete picture, uh, this is the school's numbers as of twelve thirty one, on the expense side. I, I, I test on the revenue side, but on the expense side. Your, your expenses halfway through the year would be at nine million six hundred and ninety five, nine hundred eighty three dollars if you were on target to spend your budget, okay? Your actual, and now this is general purpose fund, Freddie, keep me straight, okay?
Okay.
This is just strictly the gen, general purpose school budget. You, you actually spent six million one hundred forty eight, and again, half of your budget is nine million six ninety. Again, that can be very misrepresentative, because I don't know of expenses that are loaded to come in at the end of the school year. Or things of that nature that's gonna substantially increase that number. And based on what your budget is for expenditure, I'm assuming there's a major expenses that's not reflected the first six months. You mentioned a payroll was, was a big one at the end.
Right, yeah, it's a big one in, in June, that June paper, 'cause you're paying June and July. You're, you're basically doing, at the end, you know, at the end of May, you're coming up with three payrolls at once. And that's at the end of the fiscal year, so I'm strictly.
Look at that, that, that's rich, because that's a tough one.
That's the toughest part, that, you know, you crunch your numbers all the way, 'cause that's the end of the fiscal year. And that's where it's tough, when budget time comes, because we're trying to still do those same, get everything paid, get everything done, so we can.
Sure, well, and look at those numbers, Freddie, do you have a general statement that you can make? If, if half of your budget is nine million six hundred and ninety thousand dollars, okay?
Right.
Is, is, and you've spent six million one forty eight, are we tracking?
We're, we're tracking, Freddie, we're tracking right now, on, pretty well on target. But that's where we got, if you project that, that's the toughest part, because of that salary. We're projecting about, right, if you're asking me how much we're gonna be under this time, I'm saying somewhere like it were last year, about half a million.
I was gonna say, it was a little over half a million last year.
I'd say, I'd say it right now, we're gonna be somewhere around that, around that number.
Well, I, I just remember the reason, the reason, audit, audit summary that whatever they made the comment that on the school side, you need to be aware of, because you're using your reserve, and with the reserve requirement that you have required. What, is that two point something in?
Well, you've got, you've got a percentage.
I understand, but.
That's correct, somewhere in that neighborhood. Three percent minimum, that's why we got, so whatever that is, it's a three percent, it's a three percent minimum. I'm saying usually two and a half, three, is what I, I estimate. And they make you do that, because you may have some major expenses come about, and that's why the state makes you do that. You wanna spend just everything you've got, because you never know what's going to happen. Some systems, that's why it says in law, is because some systems got a control with that, and they had to go out and borrow out interactively or something on non recurring expenses, which is not good.
So how much are you saying that we're above the B E P, including the sales?
M O E. Well, I was gonna say M O E.
No, I'm saying how much are we above the B E P?
Oh, well, above B E P were four hundred some thousand dollars.
Are you talking the one eighty five?
That, that, that one eighty five is included.
So four hundred?
Yeah, four hundred.
Four, roughly four hundred, yes. But, and, and again, I know you understand, Corey, but I'll just say it again, from our standpoint in county, it's M O E.
Got you, I, I was just trying to figure out the difference between the two.
Yes, sir.
Now, the same my friend said, you know, you're looking at a million dollar deficit, you know, on your operation. So, you know, if you was in private sector, that's what I've done for the last four years, been in private sector. And I've dealt with the mechanics side of it. Now, if that come up to the structure of what we're looking at as far as doing our inventories and stuff like that, and if a company was coming up short, then you had to make a decision on what you did and how your operation run. At one time, we were carrying anywhere between four to six million dollars in parts on the shelves. Well, in order to recoup some of their money, they cut back on our inventory, and it was on an as used basis. Instead of tying up the money, they would use it as a medium. But, so, I mean, you know, if, if you're looking at this, and you're looking at your operation as a whole of the school system now, and if you broke down the cost per school that you have, and the teachers that are housing the schools, has there anything been thought about consolidation, or any, any of these, you know, to try to, to try to curb line your spending? I'm just asking the question.
Have you talked about redistricting?
We have.
Okay, I'm gonna let the board talk a little bit here, instead of just me, talk, because those decisions are board decisions.
Well, that's what I was saying.
We have, uh, that's, that's getting down to number eight, Mr. Chairman, I think, if you wanna go, let's talk about number seven, because we're eight. That's what, we have made those discussions, and yes, people are talking that, you know, you wanna go number eight, I can skip number seven, I don't care to do that, Mr. Chairman. But yes, those discussions have been.
Hey, it's important for everybody.
Well, I mean, you know, we're talking.
Let's go to ten and fifteen, if you want, you wanna talk ten fifteen, you wanna talk numbers, uh, you know, our roof's pretty well, let's see, wanna talk numbers now. The school roof's two point one seven one, that will take care, our bid came out, uh, right at one point, at one point nine, so we're looking, we're looking good there. Uh, under, uh, we were under, which was great. Uh, and then west side will be needed by, we're estimating twenty twenty two, materialization on the roof there. And in Short Mountain, Alberta East Side, estimated somewhere in twenty twenty, that's your best roofs in the county, of those three smaller schools, is twenty twenty four. And that's the estimate there. So the immediate, the immediate capital needs in the next two, two years are for those, those roofs. That's the immediate capital needs that we have. Now, the, the ten fifteen year plan, that's their future. And I think that's probably the crux of this meeting, is, is the, is the future. So, uh, it's out there, uh, we've got three of our, our board members here, and I'll let you, let them talk, because they're the ones going to have to make that decision about redistricting, and I can't make that as just as a director. I work, I am their employee, so those three individual board members, or the, the five board members comprising the County Board of Education, make zoning decisions, and also make any kind of consolidation. But in the past, you know, we can back in that past, and I say, look, those, those pastimes, that was done kind of in conjunction with the commission, too, during those times. Derek can take more about his, your grandfather, Brent, was, was on during that time, and my grandfather was on the, on the commission at a time when we did consolidation. And it's not, it's not pleasant, it's not fun, it's not, it's not anything. But there's the numbers in front of you, uh, for our schools currently right now. And certainly, operational costs from each one of those, uh, schools is different, because they have, you can look at the total per school down there at the bottom, and, uh, so you can see the, the current enrollment, these were figures that we compiled last week, uh, there they are, so. More members, I'll leave, I'll leave that to y'all to continue.
Well, I, 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 just one question, I'll answer some of them. Could you take east side, a hundred and thirty nine, and Short Mountain, combine them in one of those two schools? Either school hold, uh, two hundred and sixty nine kids?
Absolutely not, Mr. Chairman, I will speak to that.
With either school?
On, on the roof, let me just make this statement before y'all move on, and, and I wanted to make sure. Appreciate David and all the board members, because you saved us ninety thousand dollars on the bid yourself, because the man who pitched the roof was Lee Fasson, and basically, by any time he stood corrected, the architect said, it didn't make a difference. We can get this way or get that way. It just, this way, it's a little mean, not say a little movement, weight of the, of the thing, but it did not affect the quality of what the results you just wanna give, and whatever, and all, all of that, they stayed behind that way of doing it. And by choosing that way of doing it versus the other way of doing it, it was ninety thousand dollar difference on that, so I appreciate it.
So back to that question I just asked, so can east side or Short Mountain absorb two hundred and sixty nine students if you close one or the other?
All right, here's some similarities, I, I can't answer that question, I can't tell you with no.
Stop thinking of.
Will Short Mountain hold east side?
No.
Okay, so then consolidation is off the table.
Well, you, we just go through the screen.
How can you consolidate if they won't hold students?
You, you could take probably half of those kids and take them all back.
Well, you could do that now.
You could take half of those kids and take them to east side. Okay, there's a problem, that wouldn't. Woodland is already at three hundred and fifty.
Three hundred and fifty two, as of, as of last year, so they're within, they're.
Okay, I'm gonna have to take some of those kids somewhere down the line, not say somewhere near, somewhere down the line, we're gonna have to resolve east side, hold some of these students. That's a given, it might wanna be a board. So those children that I moved from Short Mountain are gonna have to go back to Short Mountain or somewhere else.
Well, that's it, it's off the table, I, I was moving twenty two schools, if you split them up, twenty three, four schools, it's back on the table.
I had taken through all kinds of numbers, we thought about making with very grammar at one point, a city school, and taking those other kids outside and bussing them out, so we might could make middle school rooms with very grammar. Now, the logistics of it, it's a nightmare, it's a natural nightmare. Now, I don't know if the board members would, if we thought to close a school. I'm gonna go ahead and tell you guys this, and I don't fear to tell you, because it's factual. If I had a place to put all the grammar schools, I'd go for that. But I'm talking about building a one building for all grammar schools in, because we're talking about buildings, uh, Woodland built nineteen fifty six. That, I've got pictures of Short Mountain that, uh, probably they sent me, where the roofs falling in on the gym now. The roof on that one is not gonna, it's not gonna last as long as we did this, we're trying, but it's all a mess. Our infrastructure is falling out of months. And I know we can't, and we can't build buildings, I know we can't afford that. But we need to start having these conversations, because to me, seeing the money in, in something that was built in nineteen fifty six, nineteen sixty one, nineteen sixty, is not good stewardship, that's very much.
Agree.
But how are we gonna come up with a solution for that type? I don't know.
Well, you got one, two solutions, and that's a wheel tax or a property tax.
Well, that's the property tax.
That's what I was saying, so you're looking at wheel tax.
Well, if wheel tax ain't working either, 'cause you go out to high schools, and like half of them kids drive cars, don't even have a wheel tax. So, I mean.
How can they?
It's not four starts.
Yeah, I, I don't think they can get a parking permit without a.
Parking permit, you, you go over and look.
They still have to pay, uh, if they, if they do not have a wheel tax sticker, we still make them pay an additional, we make them pay additional.
It's a county, county license plates, is that a wheel tax sticker?
There's some, yeah, we have some that, but the, the amount of kids.
License plates, that'd get the wheel tax.
But we have some that are not in county county, though. I mean, I, the, the amount of kids we have that don't go to county county. Yeah.
You know, typically, a sixteen year old kid, you can get a sixteen year old kid, they buy their car in Murfreesboro, you go on four start, that's the rock. Wheel tax sticker.
All three of my vehicles are called Alex County, all three of them, two different, you know, Franklin County and the Warren County.
I was gonna say.
Let me explain something about the tag that I heard from a car dealer. Unless you pay cash for your car, it is registered in the county.
Then it's by wayman?
It is registered in the county where you bought it for the one year.
That's correct.
You are required by state law to return to your own county and purchase the wheel tax sticker.
That's correct.
And then, from the next year, you have to buy it in your own county. And if you will request a county county sticker from the clerk, you can take it out there and put it on your tag.
And it's a.
That is a state tag, not a county tag. So theoretically, you can buy your tag in any county that the clerk will let you, as long as you buy the wheel tax sticker. There's a road and regal, two thirds of the people that build on it, they've got county county tags. Third of all, it's a county. Why didn't we come to county county? No emissions, the cars went fast. Farmer Co-op comes up here and registers all of their vehicles in county county. There's no emission test, and they don't wanna have to throw it.
I, I bought my car in, uh, Crossville, and came straight down here and bought my wheel tax sticker. But I didn't have to, I could've got by it, like you said, for a year. But I didn't have to, I could've got by it, like you said, for a year.
But see, that's the data. And then some of them, the data will go longer than that one year.
Quickly, you can have, correct your finger.
Well, that's what I'm saying, and you get the finger for.